All right, guys, just alert, we're recording now, so let's keep it clean.
I'm sure. I don't have anybody to swear.
Oh, you can.
Well, we're here.
Don't really know any that love her.
Okay.
Just doing a quick com check to make sure MJ and Abby can hear us, okay? Yes?
Yep, I can hear you.
I can hear you.
All right, well then let's call this meeting order, let's do a quick uh uh roll call and then we can uh move up.
Mark to you, the podium.
Here.
Catherine Semestic.
Here.
Now what?
Here.
Bert Schmitz. Mary Jo Phelps.
Here.
Okay, Joan and Larry are not attending.
So I'm glad everybody made it, that that keeps us in warm state, so good job. Uh next up. Just a quick uh share person comments um. Thanks to a lot of help from a lot of people. We submitted the DEP grant request on Monday. And everybody really chipped in with a whole bunch of stuff, Mark was great with maps, I did document collection collection. Uh I was the ankle biker um. We had Abby doing some serious. Yeah, so so that thing, which is a great sign, there's a couple more brands we're looking at to sort of round it out. Um but but that's what uh we've been working on. So next order of the uh thing is just the approval of the minutes. So um I know when you, it was sort of abbreviated meeting, but we didn't have to skip the minutes out, thank you Lori. Um so uh can I get a motion to or is there any changes that are requested from those minutes?
I know that we November two years, two thousand and two.
Okay, we've got a motion on that for that bird seconded by Mark. All right, any discussion needed? Nope. Usually MJ is really good about proofing, so. That's MJ, I'm pretty good. All right, good, um so all in favor? All opposed? I think you mentioned. Any extensions? No, then uh it carries unanimously. Um so old business, I think we can rock through this stuff pretty quickly because it's uh some of it's not really uh in season right now. Although there's a couple that we should discuss. Uh pollinator path project, I don't think the nothing going on right now, correct?
Send that email uh uh to everybody that I post that I put out with a link to a with information about how to get your pollinator or certain fall.
Yes. That's great, good job.
I did post that. You know, just information.
Yep. Cool. Nothing else, good, uh food composting. Do you have anything on your end on that?
What's that?
Oh, uh I'm sorry, uh residential food composting.
Nothing new, no.
No, no.
How do we boost that? I mean, like where, what's the status of it right now? Is it? Is it kind of going away? Is it building off? Is it just lingering?
It's lingering, it's flat.
It's flat.
The last time I looked, and I haven't looked at it once, I can reach outside and get the the data and create a chart of it, but
Okay.
Um last time I looked, it sort of after the first month, it got to like five hundred pounds, maybe, and it's been staying there, you know, within plus. Yeah.
Just want to get some more information out, I want to yeah, I want to boost it so that maybe people who don't know about it or want to know.
Yep.
Because we haven't done anything with it in a while. I don't want to just leave it like that and assume that people are just gonna do, but I want to keep putting the information out there. Keep reminding them, keep telling more people who maybe didn't know about it, or maybe just moved here.
Right, right. Okay, um open to all ideas on this, uh we we've done two or three days at the Don't Can You Unplug? I think that was successful uh first off time we did it. Um you know, there, I found a great website just the other day, I was looking into um somebody was erroneously saying we don't recycle. And reality is, we don't recycle the black plastic, we do all the other types. The black plastic does get thrown in, so I had been erroneously putting that into our.
Plastic?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Big bucket that I put my plastic in.
Yeah.
And I do a lot of stuff, most of my evening is is stuff with uh the prepared stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Stomps. To the plastic.
Yeah, yeah. So wait.
I think I'm not sure.
Okay, so clear plastic, you know, uh they they categorize it one and two for the clear plastics. The later in, the higher numbers, the five, six, sevens though, aren't being composted.
Right.
Or aren't being recycled. So I was thinking, you know, as a way to sort of broaden it up from just food waste recycling, maybe we, that website actually.
Okay.
Um I've I've forgotten what it is.
And it does, and it
Different takes to connect.
It does, and it and it talks about the plastics, because I always confused about I don't even put them in my in my recycling because I don't know which ones and I don't know if they're actually being recycled.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, so uh I found out that uh anyway. So why don't we do the phone, I'll I'll send you the link to the website. Great resources, I think it's got a whole section on food waste.
Okay.
Recycling, and if not, there was another website I was going to that I was let's just try and look at, see what other towns are doing to get excited about food waste recycling, so I'll send you those websites.
Okay.
I think we should educate Clinton not only on food waste, but also in general.
Oh, yeah, definitely, and I think that I think plastics issue was a big issue, because I think everybody's sure they're as confused as I am, recycling, so I'm not dealing.
I was confused, I was, I was like, so great website to go to and it put it all up.
As long as they do have actual recycling, I mean, everything is recyclable, it doesn't mean that they are being recycled.
Right, but in the mixed stream recycling, they don't take those.
Okay, in the mix, they don't, okay, so then whatever information you have about that.
I will say, and they also allow you to print out these cards and things like that that are really cool.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe we get some cards made up and uh uh make it available at the re, you know, the the town waste uh facility.
And also want to find out from the guys, like, how are they managing it? Are they are they having any difficulties with it?
Yeah.
Uh is it, you know, have have any problems arose from it?
Yes.
That they want to talk about.
So um I talked to him probably about a month ago. Um I go every week, so they know me, they know I do food waste recycling. And you know, I was talking to the guy. You know, the baldish guy. And he was like, you know what, the problem is, I always spill some on my boots and that my boots smell and I have that was his big complaint. But in terms of, I don't think they mind at all. They do, you know. This, so you know, it's not popular there with the the workers. Um I don't think they have any problem at all once they get it into the or get it into that system.
Yeah, because I'm just wondering if there's, you know, there's any ways that's difficult for them, if there's something we can do to improve on, it would be encouraging workpeople to do.
Right, right. Yeah, they're definitely not uh incentivized.
Right.
You, so.
Yeah.
I definitely want in the in the
What?
Recyclables.
In the dishwasher.
Yeah. What? Dishwasher.
So we're back to the the, yeah, the plastics.
Yeah, well, plastics.
Yep.
I go to the, I go to the dump. I haven't been there. So. No, I don't have.
You know, I just want to get as much information.
So.
Share with the with with the public, if you can get, because I want to I want to build up a little bit more. Things, guys.
Yeah, well, so educated enough. Uh you know, they got rid of the waste incinerator. That had, you know, really raised, because now we're we're trucking the garbage out of state. So there's a great deal of incentive for recycling. Food waste recycling, anything we can do to keep it.
The only thing is that a lot of the towns I notice are doing that, doing the composting, like the ones that are having it picked up are sending it off to, sending it off to facilities where it's being burned, I guess, or maybe they're making a deal with it. I don't really know if that's a good program or not.
I don't know either.
And uh I don't, it's not the kind of thing that I like, I really, I really like this doing, I really do.
But, oh, yeah.
To that, if this program gets big enough, whatever, for for people who don't bring their stuff.
Right.
You know, we do, but a lot of people don't.
Right.
And I I wish that we could start maybe talking about Blue Earth again and see if we can get to do a pickup for for people and do a composting, that would expand how much waste you're compost.
Right, yeah. But you know, I would actually talk twice or three times.
No, I don't, Spitzer doesn't do that. And I and I don't see why, and that's not their business to do that, and they're not going to compost, they will fall off and burn it. I I I don't think we need Spitzer, they've got everybody else's business on trash, they don't need to do this too. It's not their specialty, it's not what they do. Uh Blue Earth, this is what they do.
Right.
And I like the way they do it, and I'm hoping that we can talk to them again, with the people who need it to be picked up.
Right, yeah, it just was too expensive, so.
Well, there's a lot of things that are expensive that needs doing, and I think that we need to push it a little harder.
Okay. All right, well, so I will ship you the uh websites.
Okay.
Um nothing on Japanese, what, not weed, nothing on the use of.
Hold on just one second, Nick, I just want to let you know, I don't know when it's, it was supposed to be out already, but there's gonna, I wrote an a piece about Japanese not weed for Clinton events.
Oh, great.
It should be coming out any day, just so you know.
Outstanding, MJ. All right.
But that, that's the other thing too, though, I don't know how many people read Clinton in advance, I think that we, I was kind of hoping that we could I don't know, find other ways to get it out there besides a magazine.
Yeah, I mean, we've done the uh whole explaining the next door.
Yeah, I mean, well, I positive with them, and I don't want to put like everything on positively Clinton either.
Right.
Because I don't have to be a P or an M to page, that's why I administer that, to get away from the negativity of the that doesn't mean that we're a topic or, you know, specific thing. I would really like to see another program or or page put aside for sustainability, you know, where people like sustainable, sustainable Clinton. Where, you know, people will eventually all go there for their information, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Uh the social media is the same, I mean, maybe for some people.
It's all people, because there's some people that don't get on social media, there's some people.
Well, there's a lot of ways, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things. You know, you can put out a news.
Yeah.
You know.
The Harvard News is another great because it's a short newspaper. I've got to believe they're they're searching for.
I'm 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 looking for young people, in other words, to get involved in the community, they don't do that.
No, uh they they don't exist.
No, they do exist, they need to be, they need to be informed, they need to be uh given the information in the way that they that they choose to receive it, and it isn't usually a magazine or newspaper. We need to do. Yeah, unfortunately, that's the way it is, and they don't see a lot of young people getting involved. In this community or anywhere, and they should be.
No, it's, there's a problem, there's a, there's a problem there here in New England and in some other states, that is, people aren't able to.
No, I mean, I'm it's, it tends to be the same older group of people like us that are doing this, and I'd like to see people young people that just moved into town, and I moved here when I was in my mid twenties, I mean, where are people?
Right.
You know, maybe having virtual meetings instead of in-person meetings or things like that.
Right.
But we got to do, we have to do better to get aboard it, it's just not working the way that is.
Okay. Fair enough. Uh nothing on the public use of Benford, but can't hear them. Uh that is in the library, thanks to Joan and we just, you know, at this point, I think that's as far as we're gonna get. Uh did anybody talk to uh the sustainability committee?
No, I did, Nick, I went to their their meeting, it was just Sue, and she had um um Brett on, you know, FaceTiming while we were talking, and basically um she just wants to know when at like, when beautification or inland wetlands or conservation commission, if there's any news that's pertinent to one of the categories with sustainable CT, you know, like um she would love to have advance notice of of any program that is uh gonna happen with regards to pollinator pathways um you know. And she she wonders who she could, what contacts she could have um with with beautification, if they're the ones that are like uh on the front end with that. Who should she talk to um regarding when a program might happen?
Okay, I'll I'll facilitate that with uh Sherry.
Okay.
Uh at least get them talking. Um and then I think we should have her in on one of our meetings and then.
What's that?
We should invite her in to our meeting in the near future, just find out if they're up to it.
Okay.
Didn't Matt join the committee yet?
Pardon me?
Didn't, wasn't that, couldn't that be also supposed to go, that was, wasn't he supposed to go join sustainability again?
Yeah, as far as I know, he was appointed, I don't know if he has been to the town clerk yet, I will check on that.
He did not come to the meeting, uh that's all I know.
Is he still in school or something?
What's that? No, he's not, he's he's not in school, he's thinking about it, but um graduate school, but no, not right now.
I'll I'll, I can I can reach out to him tomorrow and and see where he's where he's at.
Awesome.
Can I ask you, oh, it's friends with me, we just went to a concert, can we use it up? I saw you in there with friends.
Oh, really? So on to do business. Uh just rolling through this, I did submit the annual report uh that I had circulated, thank you MJ for the edits. I did put those in, I submitted the budget, so that's in um. And they on plan, do you know what this updated on the plan of conservation and development is?
Yep, so I just, so a couple of things, we have our consultant from Resilient Land and Water on board. The Planning and Zoning Commission has created a subcommittee of their group that's going to take point on managing the logistics of getting this plan done over the next year, um but the obviously the Conservation Commission is going to have a role in crafting this plan and then kind of future steps um for a a number of different issues, so the consulting team will be coming to you in the the early part of the new year to start um hearing from you on your priorities for the next ten years, what kinds of programming, open space needs, all that kind of stuff um you are thinking about, and then also um you know, kind of laying out way, uh you know, additional ways that you can get involved and share information, um and I apologize because I'm about to go pick up my kid's food, but um the other thing is look for us at Christmas in Clinton, if anybody is gonna be there, we will be there with a table and can kind of talk more. So we'll be, I'll be giving you updates along the way um that I just wanted to let you know that that was going on.
Okay, great. What is Christmas at Clinton?
So that's one to four this Sunday um along Route One and at the town hall, so our table will be out in front of the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. Statly, I will be in Kansas City, so. But you're great and stuff. Support the town.
And there is, there, we do have a project website, there is a survey that we're hoping folks can take and really spread the word on. I do have a social media post for anybody who is really good with, and I know we've got at least one person here who is great with social media. So we will um I will be emailing that out and kind of doing a package just for the Conservation Commission. But um you'll be able to at least connect to the project website, spread the word, and then take the survey yourself, so that would be great.
Okay, great, thank you, Abby. Um maybe next meeting in January, we should have you know, I'd love to have the full group here, but why don't we talk about our priorities should be for the mission going forward, so that when the consultant talks to us, we've got something to say. I mean, I've got some ideas, but I'm also here with everybody's on their plates, all right? So I'll um so we can put that down, well, I guess we, as long as we keep this updated on planning and conservation, but we can use that as our spring to have a conversation.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds good.
Uh do we have to do anything on the meeting dates? I saw that you had circulated them.
You did, you did.
Okay, so did everybody receive the meeting dates? Does anybody have any issues on them? Any discussion? No? Okay, so I guess we have to accept it, so can I get a motion to accept the meeting date?
I'll start it.
All right. Um any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Um okay, any correspondence? Okay. I didn't see any this this month, you know, usually I'll get, I mean, there was the CLCC newsletter. That's about it. Um okay, so we're a little early, we actually have a kind of schedule.
We finished.
Uh well, we have the joint, we closed it up.
Okay, I've been meaning to send a email to Sherry, I didn't contact her yet since we've been doing
Yeah.
So what can, why did they restructure everything? Abby?
Yep, so there's um a couple of things, we're just, we were trying to balance out some of the duties, um Lori's role, which is, hang on a sec, guys, please. Um Lori's, sorry, Lori's role is um was sort of expanded, but also she's providing additional support to conservation, to coastal resiliency, to sustainability, so there's sort of a synergy with those groups and this one. And then also just to balance out the workload, um so we had a position previously that were the Planning and Zoning Commission was covered by one position, and then ZBA, inland wetlands and conservation was covered by Sherry, and so we were just trying to balance things out a little bit better. So um we're just sort of overall looking at efficiencies in the department and figuring out how we can kind of increase our services for for all of the various groups that we work with.
Right. There we go. Yeah, you know, I'm sure that's more, I I think hearing from you, you just didn't want to deal with me anymore. Never.
Um so the guys there are supposed to show up at seven, are they?
Yeah, I'm wondering if they're going to, because we sort of, it's almost like we're at that stage.
You're finalizing stuff and everything.
Well, I, you know, the offers out there, there's a letter of intent, the grants have by and large been submitted, there's a couple more to go. Um and now it's just sit and wait, you know? And brush your fingers, I mean, the next big thing is to go in front of Clinton, um just so you know, and actually, we should do a vote on this. Um I don't think everybody's okay with this, but I submitted a yeah, I submitted a capital request with fifty thousand for the land acquisition, and then every year following that, twenty-five thousand that we go into the so that we would sort of be in a much better position going forward, not behind the eight ball, but so can I get a motion that we accept that capital request that I just described?
I'll move to accept that, yeah, whatever he says.
All right, any discussion on that? I know I didn't run it past people, but I I had to get it in, I didn't want to miss the deadline.
Yeah, we mentioned that before.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, that was a good plan.
It's good.
Yeah.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 I give it more time now. Um all opposed? There is unanimously, um all right, so we just, yeah, we dotted the so.
Ask Gary Bagwell randomly a question.
Yes.
Like months ago, we talked about trees in the downtown area, is that something to do with us, or is that?
I think it's us.
Yeah, that could be one of our things for
Yeah, I think so too, I was talking to um Hank Teskey, who's a member, not only of Economic Development, but he's on the town council. Um and I was basically just giving that same pitch. You know, if you look at ten years yeah, it's gonna get hotter and in the summer, it's nice to have shade in it. And he agreed and um someone, somebody had done research on the type of trees that uh Eversource would be okay with. So uh we'll have to find that research out, then we should uh we should see if we can make that project next year, get really good, thank you for breaking. All right, so I'm gonna close this meeting, I think if we're all said and done here, because I don't think the joint plan, first of all, we're missing Larry, so and missing the other two. Uh Mike and Mike, we've got Mark here and myself. But uh that's not
It's kind of a winning game now.
And so it's kind of an winning game, I mean, it was a big first event, and again, thank And again, thank you, Abby, for all the help and Mark. Um, now it's just a matter of you know, we have to get Clinton grant. We have to get the state grant. A little over the life course of, we need to get some loads. Um, Abby, I spent some time looking at the federal grant that I was tossing around. Uh, it looks fairly easy to fill out, I gotta say. It's only eight and a half pages of narrative. That's it.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, so let me know how I can can help if it's just a cut and paste or if there's anything else to.
Uh, well, why don't I take a crack at it and you can correct it?
That sounds good.
Yeah. Um, because, you know, it doesn't have to be eight and a half pages and you can add pictures.
Yeah, yeah.
So I I fully intend to use some of the maps and things like that. You've got to go on. Um, but, you know, that's another uh it's another funding source and, you know, ultimately, it may mean that uh less to spend on this would be great. Keep their power. But.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
That was another question, like, for these maps, like is it possible to get the actual geospatial data? Do we have rather than just use the?
What, uh, you saw the S two or A two or whatever it's called?
I don't know what that is. I'm talking about getting like the actual.
That's a very cheap model. Yeah, it's a very, very detailed map. Also, if you.
But I'm talking about like a certain format G I S tooling.
Yeah.
That I use, like, I'm a geoscientist.
I know you.
It's really painful to make those maps, but if I had the actual raw data, I could go cartographically ridiculous very easily. And but.
Yeah, I can, I can share data when we have like town layers or open space adjacencies and those kinds of things. So if you have, I just, I have Arc um online. The town hasn't purchased ArcMap or ArcPro. So I can't generate as much as I would like to, um, but we can work through that.
That's, can't we just make making these maps a lot? Give off kind of a custom map really.
Good. Well, I I was very impressed with your work.
Thanks. Well, everyone was fun. It was a good.
Uh, just so you know, uh, you know, a lot of the mapping work that was required. Um, we needed to show where the trails would go and um how it was continuous to mark this stuff. Was a ground brand on that stuff. I'll I'll pour it around.
Yeah. I just see it.
We walked the act.
Oh, did you really?
Oh, you can actually.
Did you walk up one of those things where it shows you where you're walking?
Yeah, all trails.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And you can navigate out from there.
You can map your own thing, or there's already so many people have walked all the narrative trails.
Yeah.
They're already in.
That's good.
Which is great.
Yeah.
We also met with EverSource to get permission to cross their property with a trail. Um, just thought I'd give you guys stuff on that. That was a meeting a couple of weeks ago, maybe even three weeks ago. Still waiting to hear back. Uh, they can't really give us a way until we own the property. Uh, but what they can do is they can give us a you know, note that they're working with us through this. Uh, so there's a whole document. You could get that.
You know, I was living out of property a couple of years ago. And um property, it was up on this. It was, it was like a Steve Skies. It was with power. Piece of property on the side. It was a house. And they had the driveway coming from the other side of Cross and Right. Between the power lines and up to the house. So what they do.
Oh, yeah, they do do it.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, they have somebody whose entire job is to negotiate ways to land. So, you know, there's certain things that they want, don't want. Um, so there's a lot and should be.
It's a big window because that's not just the power. You're talking about the big.
Yeah, it's sort of, does a dog like off to the light?
Maybe you say.
Yeah, and they don't want us here to come to prefer us to be a dog like you're, you know, to do. So, um, yeah. I mean, I was kind of thinking, you know how there's a um we've given them a right of way. Be, but property.
Right.
So that they can access the you know, not the land trust, but maybe they could think about doing a we sort of give them a little piece of that. Maybe it's the dog like piece. So. Okay, uh, I think we're sort of at the end. So can I have a motion to close the meeting? All right. Uh, Bert seconded. So any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty.
All opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
We're done.
Thank you all. Hey, have a great holiday season. You know, if I don't see you before Christmas. Um, hope you all had a good Thanksgiving.
All right, good.
And uh, uh, we'll convene in in January.
Yes, yes, indeed. Good evening, everybody.
Good seeing you guys.